Okay, welcome. I'm Tim Skoggins. This is the Shafter Select Board. I'm calling this regular meeting to order at 6:30. I will just point out on the agenda that we have just met an executive session to discuss real estate and/or personnel issue. I also scheduled an executive session at the end of the meeting. In case we didn't get to both, we did get to both, so there will not be an executive session at the end of the meeting. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
Approval of minutes. We have minutes from our last meeting. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yeah. 13, whatever, Section 13, third paragraph.
David Kernan went on to discuss?
Yep. The second sentence, the sick or personal time, right after the word personal, I think it should be the word time. The policy does not allow for sick or personal to be... Makes sense? Okay. That's all I got.
There was one that was so tiny, I didn't even bother to call it to your attention. I've probably already lost it, so it's not a big deal. David, did you print the minutes out? It's just that one thing. I'm just going to scribble it onto here. Any other additions or corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved, 400. Now, these go into Judy's book?
This goes into Judy's. These are all recorded, yes.
Okay.
That's why we want them signed, so we know we have an official signed version of the minutes in the book.
Okay. Now, we also have the electronic version, but that's into her physical book.
This is into the stored town records, the permanent records of the town.
Right, right.
Because when we go back to research things, this is what we're looking for, to make sure that it was a signed copy. And if someone says this was stated at a meeting, we go to the one copy.
Okay. I have a check warrant number 29 for $225 for postage on...
That was for the... It's our bulk permit. We bought it last week because the rates went up this past month.
Okay, so it's our general bulk permit for postage. I move we approve check warrant number 29 for $225.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve check warrant number 29 is approved, 400. I have payroll, retirement warrant number 31, amount of $123.16. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Retirement warrant number 31 is approved, 400. Payroll warrant number 15 in the amount of $18,091.83. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Payroll warrant number 15 is approved, 400. Payroll warrant number 14 in the amount of $18,361. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Payroll warrant number 14 is approved, 400. Check warrant number 22 in the amount of $30,269.33. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. All this check warrant, the major items are... $1,800 to BD chain.
This is the variety of equipment for trucks, from tire chains to everything.
$1,200 and $1,400 to the Bennington County Sheriff.
It's just their routine payments.
All right. $1,750 to... $1,750 to KAS for our fall groundwater monitoring. $6,600 for TAM. $1,100 to the Town of Bennington. It says hazmat.
Yeah, that's the new way we're doing hazardous material days with the new SWIP. They host it and we pay a fee then. That's budgeted in next year as these things come together now.
Okay. And $4,600 to Williamy Daley. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tim, what was that, to Daley's?
Yes.
For $4,600 for what?
$4,600...
It's just gravel and...
Oh, gravel, not sand.
Oh, no, the sand's...
Yeah, I couldn't figure it out. You've got a mountain out there.
No, no, we have enough sand.
That was when the... It was in the war spell.
We've got enough sand.
The sand is completely paid for. We have a full year and it came in $1,000 over with... We never bought it all at once before.
Yeah.
So, we budgeted $50,000 and we brought it in for $51,000 and didn't have any of our guys trucking it. It was all trucked by then, so...
Yeah. Okay.
But this is gravel for other road improvements?
Yeah, it's just regular jobs. You're trying to fill some potholes and things like that. The roads are...
Oh, that stuff worked good, Dave.
Oh, yeah.
That we talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And it was cheap and I went over after it rained on it and it still was good.
Yeah, I did too. I drove over to see if I was going to sink in and it was just there.
Yeah.
Little experiment. Sometimes they work.
Made the potholes on my road better.
Yeah.
Good.
The only thing you can do this time of year.
Okay. All in favor of approving check warrant number 22 in the amount of $30,269.33, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Announcements? I just want to announce that we will be having a select board meeting, a special select board meeting, next Monday to do final approvals of the budget and the ballot warning. So, everyone plan on that. That is getting down to the end. I found out from Dave today, we could actually, if things went really haywire, we could... They would let us do it the following Monday. The general deadline is the 31st, but... And that's a Sunday, so I thought our last chance was Friday, but because 31st is a Sunday, they give us an extra day and I hope we don't need to use it.
No, I would hope not. Monday night you should do it. Otherwise Judy will be up here.
We're there. We're really pretty much there. Any other announcements?
The meeting on the 28th, Thursday, the 28th. Actually, a letter went out to all the presidents within the Village Center and all the businesses have been told to. This is where we're going to be talking about possible streetscape, what is available for tax credits for upgrading codes and that sort of stuff. And also the zoning, planning board would like to find out what people's interests are in the zoning, any zoning changes within the Village Center. So, that's on the 28th. 7 o'clock, Cole Hall, right here.
7 o'clock, Cole Hall, on the 28th.
It's on the website, is that not right?
It will be on the website. I can't remember well enough.
28th is a Thursday, next Thursday?
Yes.
And on the subject of bylaws, it's worth mentioning again that...
That's right.
That Shafter received a grant to rework our bylaws and that work has begun. Jim Sullivan from BRC was at the last planning commission meeting and we, me and the commissioners, discussed what our thoughts are on that and Jim took it and went to work on it. The first thing he's going to work on is the commercial zone, zoning, because that's the thing that we've been spending most of our time talking about. And we'll go from there. Certainly, if people have opinions, we'd like to hear about it and best way to input that would be to send me or the planning commissioners an email or come to the planning commission Public comments. There's something on here about Cub Scout troop 330 presentation.
There is.
I see some people that I've associated with Cub Scouts.
These are our Cub Scouts.
The only thing that's missing is... are the Cub Scouts. I had been in contact with Faith Rhodes, who was the Cub Scout PAC leader for 330, and we were just having difficulties getting everybody together. So, we decided that the expedient way to do this would be to do a public presentation so that the boys would be recognized for their work and then I would get the certificates off to her and she would be able to present it to the boys at one of their PAC meetings. So, that's what we're going to do. So, on behalf of the Recreation Committee, Helen Olney and myself, Deana Rugi, would like to thank Cub Scout PAC 330, their parents and their PAC leader, Faith Rhodes, for their hard work in maintaining Tilner Trail over at Howard Park. Obstacles were removed and brushed cleared to make the trail safe and enjoyable for nature walks by the community. We would like to present the following boys of Cub Scout PAC 330, certificates of appreciation for all that they do to make Shafter Berry a great place to live and to call home. And what I will do is just pass this around. It's in a plastic sleeve and all of the certificates are in here, but you can take a look at how the certificate is set up.
Dave?
Thank you.
Okay. Helen, would you like to call out the names of the young men?
Yes. The Cub Scouts recognized for their work are as follows. Eli Case, Nathan Conroy, Mason Crozier, Sawyer Crozier, Russell Endress, Silas Rhodes, Noah Warner. Boy Scout Daniel Rhodes also participated in this community service. We sincerely thank them.
And as a side note, we are looking forward to them also participating in Tilner Trail cleanup this summer again. They really enjoy coming down to Howard Park. They love it.
Good.
They use it as a camping experience and they also help the community out by tidying up and kind of grading over a Tilner Trail. So, for that, we truly appreciate all they do.
Good job.
It's an incredible effort and it really is very well organized and we can't say enough about how it is put together.
Yeah.
And it means a lot to them and certainly a lot to us.
Very good.
Because we just love having the kids down there. They're using the park. They're appreciating the facilities and it's a wonderful place to be.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. On behalf of the Select Board, I'd like to thank you and the Cub Scouts for your work. This town, like a lot of small towns, depends on volunteers for a lot of the things that we do and it's really nice to see our young people taking up that banner and helping the town out. And it's an important service. A lot of people use that park. We have... We're talking this evening about the many jobs that we have right now that are done by volunteers, including... Or volunteers or near volunteers at the park. And that kind of help really goes a long way.
Absolutely.
We're very appreciative.
You're welcome. We love doing it.
Okay.
We appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Any other public comments? Helen, you could be public. If not, how about a treasure? You can come up and be a treasure.
I've got one of our comfortable chairs.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
December was an action-packed month, so I did a slightly more involved report this time. I did a cash flow for you this time, just so you can see what's coming in and going out. And if you would like to see this every month, I'd be happy to do that. I think it's useful to see actual money as opposed to all the accounting stuff I throw at you. So, this is actual money. What you'll see there are the... First, you see what came in and so it was, you know, pay as you throw from the transfer station and delinquent taxes, things like that. And then the disbursements, you already know about. You already signed all those warrants, but it's good to see them all in one place. And payrolls and miscellaneous charges there. So, you can see, we went from a cash balance, a very large one, to a manageable one and that's because all of the school tax money was in there. And that's not in there now, so you have a pretty good snapshot of what our actual checking account looks like as of a couple of weeks ago with this number. The other funds there, you see the... That's actual money too. That's the reserve fund checking account. And I also show it less water because that's a slightly different account, so... And then the Listers reappraisal fund. And then below it, I did the budget status that I always do. And it shows, again, that we're right on target, right where we should be for both revenues and expenditures for this time of year. And below that, I've got the delinquent taxes. Just I like to keep an eye on that. And that's where we are. We're doing better than last year at this Anybody have any questions about any of that?
Very good. Yeah, I like this report.
Okay.
Feel free to send a copy of this electronically to either Dave or myself and we'll put it in the packet and then I can...
Oh, sure, yeah.
Put it up and save a few trees.
Sure. You bet. And then the other thing we wanted to talk about was the sort of... Sort of an update on the audit. And Dave, jump in if I'm... It was sort of a joint venture here. The auditors identified several, although we knew about them, they helped us identify, funds that have not had any activity, some of them for years. And it would make a lot of sense to shut them down. Some of them have tiny or even negative balances. Just get rid of them. I'll clean up the books, send that money back to the general fund. In many cases, they are grants that we've already spent down and there's just a little tiny balance remaining in them and there's no need to keep those funds active. So... Was that in the packet?
Yes, they have this in the packet. It's up on the board behind you, actually.
Oh, there it is. Okay, yeah. So, you can see that a couple of them are even negative. So, if we shut these down and send that money back to the general fund, they... What, it's about $32,000?
Yeah, it's just a little bit under $32,000 that could be sent back to the general fund. There are two, the Street Dance, which has a balance of 5211. And talking to people involved in it, this is not grant money. There was even revenue generated from the Street Dances. According to Karen Melanger and a few other people, it was always meant to do work at Cleveland Park. So, I propose transferring the 5211 to the park fund and upgrading Cleveland Park with it. We could use a new ice rink over there because the other ones torrent to shreds, I understand. And we could use some new equipment over there. So, $5,000 in that park would be good for the year. There's another one, it's a grant that we received in 2004. I've contacted the state because of its age and they don't seem interested in their $5,000 back. It was given to us as a community enhancement grant and I suggest that we use that for the Economic Development Fund, the Southern Vermont thing that's going to come up later. And we'll just roll that in. Instead of having a separate fund, we'll just put it in the Economic Development Study Fund, I think it's called. And, you know, we use the money for whatever the board decides to use there. The rest of it is offset. If you wanted to go through them quickly, Highway Emergency is just some money that was put aside in case something happened, I guess, a truck broke. But that's basically what the general fund is. And we have a large balance where we should be with that, so we just don't have a use for this. There was a contingency fund with $23,000, with $23,000 in it, same concept, but again, the general fund covers that. And then the rest are just what Melanie said. These are little amounts. A lot of, even the little amount is interest that just keeps being added quarterly to...
Monthly.
Yeah, month, oh, monthly. Oh, that's a joy. You know, at $0.02 a month, we're getting interest on this and it's just really not doing anything. There's no point in having them. All this stuff is closed out. I went through the closeout letters for all these that were grants. The state money was all used. This is basically our contribution that was just left in these funds and it's just pull it out and do something with it. Either use it to reduce taxes, if we want to go that way. We have to rework some numbers, anything with it. But it's just sitting in funds that are inactive, doesn't help anybody.
Any questions about that?
And we did run it by the auditors and they say, yeah, there's no point in having these.
Yeah. Dave and I have been thinking that we can use $32,000 to offset taxes this time. We're coming in pretty flat on taxes, so it'll bring it down, you know, a fraction of a cent, but we're in good shape with all of that. And I think this will clean up our books a lot, maybe allow us to... Maybe that's part of why we've been spending all this high bank fees, is because we've got all these...
I think that's not related to it.
It's not why it is.
And I'm actually... I'm going to be revisiting that with... I've never actually met my bankers face to face, but I'm going to be meeting them this week and we're going to talk about what it is I'm getting for that money and whether we can either negotiate it down or possibly we'll have to look at other options. And they know about that, so we're meeting this week to talk about it. So, unfortunately, I don't think that's going to affect that, but it will make it easier to manage, but also easier to see where the money is when you don't have so many funds. It's pretty unwieldy right now.
And this is all in part too, because the auditors also have moved some of these... It's the three 10s and the two 10s and they've actually moved some of it. Paving reserve was a problem because it was in a couple of different categories. There was paving expenses, paving income, state income. So, the auditors created a whole new account for it so that everything will just go in there, be subtracted from there, be nice and clean. There aren't multiple accounts laying around. It will make it... It's just streamlining.
That's why you haven't audit.
Well, that is why you haven't audited, so that they can... And we have their blessing to do it, which is even better from my point of view.
I would call your attention just to this contingency fund, because I noticed the other day that the school has a contingency fund in their budget as well. And as recommended by the auditors, that's not really necessary. You have a general fund. You keep that between 10% and 15% of your budget. If you have a contingency, an expense that you didn't expect, that's where that comes from. You don't need a separate fund for that. So, that's part of the largest part of that $32,000 that will go back into the general fund.
Anything else?
No. Thank you, honey.
Very nice.
Thank you.
I was referring to this as the money we found in the couch cushions?
Yes.
Vote for and report.
Well, they were out plowing this morning. It's a holiday, so I think he slept in tonight. They were out this morning. They were out Saturday also because that slush got a bit icy in places, so they had to put some material down. It's been a very slow winter, obviously, for any kind of road work like that, so things are pretty quiet. Overtime is so far below last year. It's, you know, kind of laughable. I doubt we'll even make the year before at this rate unless something changes. We are supposed to have some kind of storm this weekend, but it would be the first one of any interest this year, so... Basically, all's going well. As Ken mentioned earlier, Steve had gotten some material and we threw down on some of the roads to try and address the potholes. He thought it would work and it did work. You know, I didn't notice any problems with where it went down and it was significantly cheaper than using our higher grade stuff we like to put on when we're actually repairing the roads. Like in mud season, we'll start using different things. But potholes, as Ken and all you know from driving them at this time of year in this kind of weather, is difficult to deal with. Hopefully now, because it's going to be freezing the next few days and then snow, it'll end that problem for a while. I've had a few minor problems with the trucks where they cobbled together a device for the back of the ram to try and get the salt to spread in the middle of the road where it should be. Having some limited success with that, but...
I talked to them this morning.
Yeah. Well, that's why I'm calling it limited success.
It's tough to change that.
It is, it is. I give them a...
That was meant to be right on the truck.
Effort on concocting that little chute they built on the back of it, but it had its issues when the salt starts getting damp and started clinging to the ramp, so... It was a good try, you know. That's about all I can say about the roads right now.
The coarser sand seems to be, you know, if anybody has any comment about it, but the sand they're using isn't just plain sand. It's that coarser stuff.
Oh, it's... Yeah.
I think it's working perfect, don't you?
Yeah. Yeah, that gravel that you guys found is $10 a ton cheaper...
Yeah.
...than the other. It's really worked good.
Yeah.
And it's... I don't know who came up with the idea, but congratulations.
I think this is a good mix. And the darker stuff we got from Husick is, I think it's just better. You see it on the road better too.
Yeah.
Which makes people feel like something's been done and it heats up and so far, we'll have a good shot this weekend if it really does snow. We'll see how it all pans out.
Okay.
But we do have enough of it, so...
And things went smoothly this time with our contract plowman?
Yeah, with our employee, part-time employee.
Part-time employee.
Yeah. Yep, yep. He knows what he's doing, so it went fine. I wish we had a little more hours for him so that he'd like to stay on, but we'll see what we can do, because we'll be talking in the summertime too about maybe beefing up with a part-time guy in the summertime to get some of the projects done instead of having a person year-round, a full-time employee. But yeah, he's more than capable on the truck. The biggest issue is really the ram. The ram, the oil pan's gone. We have one on order. It's a matter of finding two days for it to go over to New York State to have it replaced. It's on warranty, but it rotted out and it's... This is only its, what, second winter, third winter? So, it's kind of disappointing. And it doesn't salt very well, so...
They have to put the engine to put the oil pan in.
Yeah. So, that might be on the block this year along with the one ton. And we'll just replace the one ton with the two, for the two trucks and take it from there. Because I think next winter, we'll be looking for a contract plower, probably, one or two.
That'd be for the blacktops, right?
Blacktops. No, we're always going to wind up doing the dirt roads ourselves, only because of the size of the truck and setting them way up there. That gets expensive, even to hire someone to do that, although lots of towns do. But we have the crew and the ability to do it. But I think we'll drop the one ton in the ram and just replace it with the one truck that's in the capital budget.
Okay. Good on roads. Fire Department Equipment Requests.
Yeah, Joe just sent it around to me. They're asking for a couple of things, a combi tool. They're going to trade in their old... The combination tool is part of their execution unit. They're going to trade in, whether it's all pump, they're going to contribute $2,000. And the final cost for the town fire department, from the town fire department budget will be $3,500, which is well within their equipment budget for the year. They also, we talked about this before, the siding to buy and we're going to store at the small firehouse and put it on the spring. They have three prices from RK Miles, $33.45, Curtis Lumber, $35.21, and ABC Supply for $29.97. Joe wants to go with RK Miles and they will just pick it up and store it in the firehouse until better weather. But they're going to get a good price on it now. And so, they've just... Joe wants you to be informed and they'd like to go ahead and purchase these things. And it's all part of their budget.
And the volunteers are planning to install it?
I don't want to say. I would believe that's correct, but I don't want to say because I'm not positive. I do believe that's the idea, though. I do believe that's the idea, though. And if the board, you know, approves, then they'll just go ahead and buy these, but it is kind of part of their budget to buy the equipment. It's in their budget already.
If it's in their budget, do we have to approve it, or...
We might as well pass a motion, because they're, they're over two thousand dollars.
Yeah, the one is sixty-four hundred. The actual cost of town will be thirty-five hundred, and it's for a new combination tool.
You want to take them separately? Tim?
Yeah, so we've got, total cost of the combi tool is sixty-four hundred dollars, trade-in fire company, final cost to the town is thirty-five hundred dollars. So I move that we contribute thirty-five hundred dollars to the cost of a new combi tool for the fire department.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Purchase of the new combi tool is approved four zero zero, and I move that we purchase siding for fire station number two in the amount of thirty-three hundred and forty-five dollars.
So moved.
Seconded by Tony. Did I not say moved?
Right.
I moved it, Tony seconded it.
Right. Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the purchase of the siding for station number two is approved four zero zero.
Thank you.
All right. Item ten is, I request to be on the ballot for community appropriation from WPTN. WPTN has requested two thousand dollars and asked to be on the ballot in that amount. We have, we're bringing this up because David's pointed out to me, we don't have a clear policy on that. We communicate our policy to the previous year's community appropriation requests and let them know what, what we require and what the deadline is. The deadline is typically November fifteenth for getting that in. WPTN didn't know that. When they find out that we did have paperwork that we like to have filled out about what their, what their service provides for the community, they did that.
And I can indicate here that they said Shire's Media, which is the owner of BTN partnerships, partnership uses its property, WPTN AM, as a voice for the community and provides emergency services, school closing, weather updates, EAS and Amber alerts. WPTN assists nonprofits and charities, allows airtime to town supervisors, announces local events, broadcasts public service announcements, and provides the emergency service listed And they've indicated here, as we require, their, their total budget for last year was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars, and their expenses were a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. So my first thought was, well, they missed a deadline, they didn't jump through our hoops, so we shouldn't do that, but David said what we, we probably should go ahead and allow them on the ballot. It leaves it up to the, to the voters, then, whether or not they want to approve the, the request. And in the meantime, we will put on our website what our requirements are to get on the ballot and make sure that it's known, and it's not just Bob telling the people that did it last year how to do it.
Yeah, as I recall during the review back in, I think, July, the board had decided that everything should go to the citizens, and they should decide whether or not to support it or not. There was another way of getting a petition to be put on the ballot. However, this is not the only new one this year. We don't require anyone to do a petition, so choosing them to do a petition when we didn't choose anyone else to do a petition would not be fair either.
Was that the norm back, way back, that a petition had to be submitted?
It's up to the board, and what, what I'm going to do, because this is the second year that, that we've come into something.
Yeah.
There are a variety of model policies out there, from BAVLCT, there's other towns that have them.
Right.
Bennington turned this down based on it not being a social service for the town, is what I understand, I'm not exactly clear on that, but, and that's what the director list told me, but the problem, as I see, is we don't have a, a policy. We decided after last year, going through all these, that we would let the citizens decide they were going to support these. This year, we're up eighteen percent on the request. When you include this one, we've gone from sixty-one to seventy-two thousand dollars in community appropriation requests, and because we didn't challenge, Martha Canfield is new this year, Turning Point, I think it is, is new this year, Balfour two thousand, twenty-five hundred, just like this one, I didn't see how, you know, we could, we could make a stand with these people with that, and after, we didn't say anything about the other two.
Well, plus, they just changed.
That's what they explained to me, is they, they used to, and they did at one point have a community appropriations. They got a new manager down there, and he said, we're, apparent, this, I'm getting this secondhand thing, so...
Right, it was in the paper.
He was just like, well, you know, we should do this, and so they tried at the last minute. I doubt they would have even had time, even if we required a petition to get one together, because that had to be in last week. So it's still up to the board, they can, you guys can reduce this if, if you choose, but as we don't have a written procedure to this, and we didn't challenge the other two this year, I didn't see that we could just, I could just turn these down flat. The November fifteenth deadline here is set kind of arbitrarily. It's not, we don't have that written down anywhere, so there's nowhere that anyone could reasonably search to find that, and we just put these out to people who submitted them last year.
We should probably submit a, make a policy that...
Right.
Yeah, next year, I...
...will happen anymore.
After this is done, after we get through this, when we get into the spring, I'll deliver a couple of model policies, and we cobble one together, or just take one and have a policy, we can reset it. Some towns have taken to just telling everybody we have to, like, like, reset, so everybody get a petition.
Arlington requires a, a signature.
Yeah, Sunderland started requesting petitions on, on most everything, I think, now, just kind of reset where, where you stand, because some of these just get churned year by year.
Right.
And, you know, you find out where everybody is. But there are procedures, we'll just have to get a procedure together, so we can, definitive, if I could have turned around and told them, nope, policy is, the deadline was January first, and you missed it, but we had a deadline, but it's not written of what that's based on, so...
So without objection, we'll allow BTN to be on the ballot in the amount of two thousand dollars.
Tim, could you scroll that down, because I'm not sure, that could be interpreted to be three thousand dollars, the way I look at it.
No, he told me, he told me to.
Two thousand.
I spoke to him when he came in with this.
Okay, that does look like a three.
Does.
I was thinking that, too, yeah.
It's comma, it's, it's...
David spoke into it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll let them be on the ballot. And it's worth reminding people that at seventy-two thousand dollars, we're talking about almost two cents' worth of community appropriations, so...
Yep.
Two cents on the tax rate.
Could we make a note of that somewhere on the ballot, or on the, they would see it when they voted?
I don't think so. We've had a debate here before about, about that, and the, the lawyers tell me you can't explain things on a ballot. You can state the facts and ask a yes or no question, is pretty much all you can do, but any explaining you do gets into, could be interpreted by somebody as campaigning, and you can't put campaigning on the ballot, so...
So it's going to be in the, somewhere in the town report, I would assume.
It'll have right in the column at the top, you'll, you'll see the community appropriations, and you'll see that it's gone up eighteen percent.
Right, and on the ballot, on the town report or whatever.
Yeah, and, and at the town meeting, Tom will explain that.
Absolutely.
Well, let's also keep in mind that we, we addressed this issue earlier this year, and what we decided is, based on the voting patterns, the people actually do look like they pick and choose.
I think they do.
So we'll let them decide.
It's amazing how many people listen to BTN.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, item eleven, Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone, S V E D S, E D Z. We got to come up with a shorter name for that.
I know.
Because it's a mouthful every time you try and bring it up.
It's not an acronym that you can...
We talked about it last week, and we talked about the fact that we all agree, what the report is saying, is that the, the ball is in our court, and in terms of acting on that, showing that we can be leaders, and that we do think this is important and something worth doing, I'm suggesting that we budget some money for that, and on, as Tony suggested, might be a good idea. I spoke via email with Tom Jacobs, the chairman of the Bennington Select Board, and we, we agreed that Bennington County needs to step up and show that we're, we're ready to pursue this. He and I kind of agreed on a rough number of a dollar amount equal to population, and he was pretty confident that the Bennington Select Board would put up fifteen to twenty thousand dollars toward a startup effort in creating the CEDS, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which is the first step recommended in that report for creating some sort of regional coordination of economic efforts. For Shaftesbury, that would be about thirty-five hundred dollars, and looking at what Dave was showing us a minute ago...
We can gather from there.
It looked like we've got money left over in that, from that pilot grant of almost fifty-seven hundred dollars that probably can't be used for much else than that.
Yeah, it's, it's a good use for the money, because it was part of a community enhancement grant. It was meant for studies like this, and like I said, we can put it right into the Economic Development Study Fund, and, I mean, this is all part of it, definitely with any coordination in the county.
So based on that, I would recommend that we budget fifty-six hundred, sixty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents toward the creation of a, of a SEDS.
You're going to put the whole thing towards it? I thought you were going to put thirty-five.
I was thinking thirty-five, but that money is sitting there and doesn't really have anywhere else to...
Well, I think the Economic Development Committee needs some.
Oh, you've got, you've got some plans, too, don't you?
Yeah, because you only have like twenty-seven hundred in that fund right now. This would be in addition to it, so...
Okay, okay.
So the, the balance, thirty-five away from that is twenty-one hundred, so that that would be twenty-one plus?
Plus your current balance of, I think, twenty-seven, so you guys would have like forty-eight hundred left over.
That's, that's fine, okay? Because we are going to be doing some things. Do you want to make a contingent on making sure that Bennington is going to kick in? Yes.
No. No, I don't. I think...
Well, that's not going to get off the ground unless Bennington jumps in, right?
Bennington has indicated they will jump in, and I have reached out to our local legislators, and I've heard back from Alice so far, and she likes the idea and is willing to help me reach out to other select board chairman to try and get other towns in the area signed on to this, and I think what's needed here is leadership, and I think we should say, yeah, we're willing to do it, and let them follow us. If Bennington doesn't do it, probably nothing's going to go with it, and it'll be thirty-five hundred dollars, it'll still be, that'll go back into the, into the general fund next year.
Well, could we possibly just leave it in that fund, and if, if it comes together, then we just wait to check out of the fund?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I want to check the call too, because I don't know if that track's beyond anything going down there anymore, but that racetrack, when that was going, was a big draw for around here.
Well, that would, that would be pono, then, would jump in, but this isn't going to get off the ground unless all of the towns join in with Brattleboro, with Wyndham County, right?
Correct, correct.
So...
And the way I see it is, if all of the towns in this area put up some money and say, yeah, we believe in it...
Right.
It looks to Brent, to Wyndham County like, yeah, Bennington believes in it.
So we could walk in with thirty-five hundred, saying that's our kitty, but you guys are going to kick in, too.
Yeah, and, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand from Bennington, thirty-five hundred from us. The report suggested getting a state grant for fifty thousand dollars, just asking the state to give a, a grant to do it, so this is, you know, in the right order of magnitude with what the, the report sees as what we need to get things moving.
You might see something happen, I know this is contrary to popular belief, but Saratoga, New York, ten, twenty years ago, tore down that mall over there, and they rebuilt it, and I don't think they've stopped building over there since they built a new one.
Right.
They've got a Super Walmart over there, they've got BJ's, Sears, I mean, anything that you can think of is over there, and, and you've got this new Walmart going to be down here now. They re-zoned Johnson Controls, I think, in Bennington, so that they can do something up there. I mean, if we got to be like Manchester, start in Bennington and get to be like Manchester, I don't think it's the worst thing in the world. We got to get some jobs around here somewhere.
Well, none of us like the direction we're going, and as I said last time we met, that report is the closest thing to anybody, you know, trying to do something about it that we've heard, at least in a coordinated way. Like the report said, there are little pockets of activity around, but what's needed is coordination for the entire region, and this is just our way of saying, yeah, we're on board, let's see what we can do.
Yeah, well, what we don't have is a plan. We do not have a regional plan, and that's exactly what that, what they did in Brattleboro, is create the region. So this is the beginning of it, absolutely, sure, yeah.
Okay, well, this will, this will essentially be an expense out of the budget. This fund will stay there, then, do we need to rename the fund?
No, no, I think it fits in nice with the Economic Development Study Fund, and it can be used for, either of these fit perfectly, I mean, that's what it's all about, so...
Really, if we have consensus, then we can, we can spend thirty-five hundred dollars...
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I think it does, would be worth having a motion, so that it gets in the record that we did it. So I'll move that we contribute thirty-five hundred dollars from the Economic Development Study Fund toward the creation of a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for Bennington.
Second.
Discussion?
Take it. No.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved four zero zero.
Thank you.
You guys will be right over there, right now.
Okay, real estate purchase. As we've hinted, we took a pause on the rush to get the, the garage question on the ballot because of some recent developments. Art was very helpful in pursuing those development art. Do you want to tell him what you were able to find out?
There are two properties right off from North Road, adjacent to our landfill. We purchased one of them last year. The second one, which is just, just north of the entrance into the dump, is owned by Peter Sawsvill, and he has agreed to sell it to the town, so that, that'll be on the ballot.
That's right, so we agreed on a selling price of thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars.
And we have a, been talking with the attorneys and are, have a contract drawn up. We will probably do something very much like we did the previous purchase, which is purchase over three years. I have budgeted a little extra money into the budget with three years with interest rates as low as they are, as, you know, ten thousand dollars a year. I budgeted thirteen thousand, just in case we run into any unexpected closing costs or that sort of thing. We didn't run into any unexpected closing costs the last time, but I understand that Mr. Sawsvill is not looking to hire his own attorney, so we, we may pick up the slack and do some of the, some extra paperwork there.
The other comment is, is that transfer tax...
That was done for the last one. It didn't amount to much at all.
Okay.
Yeah, it was in the packet from, from Wilmington's office. I, it was some minor, I don't remember what it was.
It's quite a bit, it's quite a bit, it's almost five percent.
Of the amount, it's, it's pretty small.
Okay.
I'm not even sure.
It's point zero...
It's .0145.
Yeah, it's very small.
Okay.
Talking about taxes that are owed on the property?
No, I'm talking about a...
The state transfer tax.
State transfer tax.
Uh huh.
State, state is looking at using that money to fund this Clean Water Act.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, so there may be some unexpected expenses there.
So we're not exempt from it, because they want their money.
That's what I'm saying. If we are exempt, if we are, okay.
One thing I was debating about was the ballot article itself, if we should... Try, indicate that, you know, if we have unexpected expenses or if the, the contract should change, should we ask for more than just the $30,000? I think I'm inclined to say no, let's just ask for the $30,000, and the standard language is borrow it over three to five years. If there are a few extra dollars that need to get spent, we can...
Take it out of the general fund.
We can take it out of the general fund. Okay. Okay, very good. Just wanted to let, let that be known. That's really good news. We've been wanting to consolidate our property there, and we didn't know how long it would be until that second one came up. But we will be looking seriously at the possibility of placing the garage there, closer to the road, where it's more visible, where we don't have to build a long, steep road down to, to the, to the other property. Both properties, in my mind, are suitable for the garage. They're industrial land, it's this industrial activity, we already own it. This just gives us another option that we'll, we want to take the time to look at carefully. Almost final budget discussions. We are not going to warn the final budget tonight, but Dave and I are down to picking nits over little bitty things in the budget. Since we last talked, nothing very much has changed in the, in the budget.
Just in the, the capital budget items, that's the only real change, is just eliminating a few things.
That's right. You did back off some on some of our plans. Do you want to...
Sure. Basically, the vehicle replacement is the same, Coal Hall is also staying the same. I took Shaftesbury Hollow Road out. We had $17,000 from the Class B Road Fund going for that. Because we have the grant for the engineering, we stand a good chance of getting the Class B grant from Better Back Roads to do the actual work. And that's a 20% match by us, which we can easily do in manpower and labor, and we can bill out hours for trucks and everything. So it looks to me like we actually get more money by going through the Better Back Roads grant. So I took that out, we'll deal with that. The rest remains the same, Murphy Hill, East Road, we want to continue paving that project. Hopefully, they'll give us the grant for Airport Road again. I dropped the chip sealing from Harvest Hills and Hewitt Drive, I think, is the road up above it, just because, and I was speaking earlier about all the different spots in the paving, when we were going through it with the auditors, we came up with a little less money. Part of that White Creek thing that was going on two years ago, that we had all been going back and forth on, transfer wasn't made, so we had a few thousand less than we thought we had. So what we'll do is we'll just do the chip sealing on the other two roads later. We do want, still want to pave the lower 780 feet of Harvest Hills where it's falling apart, and we should be able to still chip seal parren acres.
Okay, good.
You're still going to, you're still going to chip seal?
Parren acres, yes.
Yeah.
And, and pave, yeah, mill and pave the bottom of Harvest Hills where it's all breaking up. And then the following year, we can look into chip sealing the top part. But that's the only real change to that, and that would leave us about 3,000, nothing left in paving reserve and about 3,000 left in Class 3, but I'm sure that'll be absorbed somewhere. By the end of this year, with the Class 3, which we funded for 30,000, we'll have, if anything, a couple hundred dollars left in it. We've already spent well over 25,000 of it on projects we did from July to the fall. So this is the only major part, other than what Tim was saying, we're tweaking numbers to see what percentage of below last year's tax rate we'll be at this year. But it's just a little column adjustments, really, more than anything else.
Yeah, we are looking at taxes being flat down a little bit with our budget. And again, our philosophy, as we've been talking about all year, is that as we come out from under the debt service that hit us a couple of years ago, part of that is going into the equipment reserve, and we're budgeting an extra $25,000 into that, and we'll do that, we'll put more into that as the, the debt service comes off, but as that debt service comes off, we're splitting it more or less between building up that reserve so we don't have to borrow money in the future for equipment, and putting material on the roads, making the roads better, getting, doing more than half a mile of, of real road work every year so that we can get things built, beefed up. Okay, I got a letter from the Vermont Land Trust requesting that we write a letter supporting their purchase of the Buchesny property up by Hale Mountain, and their plans are to purchase the development rights for that, keep it as an operating farm, and they have asked both the Select Board and the Planning Commission to write a letter of support of that, indicating that it's consistent with the town plan. Pardon me, I pulled a letter out, and I'll go ahead and read that to you.
What's the one that's that?
Just as it came from them.
It's the one that kept the horses, it's been tied for the riding gun club for years.
So this is Donald Campbell, Southwest Regional Director for Vermont Land Trust. I'm writing to inform you that Vermont Land Trust, V L T, is working to purchase and then permanently protect from development what is now Owen and Kathy Buchesny's property. The property is approximately 150 acres on...
Bochane.
Bochane.
Oh, thank you. Say that, say that again.
That's what, Bochane.
Bochane, okay.
That's what was thrown in.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, you'd have to be told that's the right way to pronounce that. Bochane property, thank you. This property is approximately 150 acres on Rod and Gun Club Road. V L T has purchased the property and is in the process of identifying a suitable buyer for the farm. An application will be submitted to the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board for funds to purchase the development rights on the parcel. The town plan zoning regulations and regional plan of all, all indicate support for the continued use of this property for agriculture and/or forestry. A letter from the Select Board regarding this project is required by V H C B. Letters not need to be long, but it does need to state whether conservation of this land would be consistent with your current town plan. I would appreciate receiving the letter as soon as your schedule permits. So, any discussion on that point?
You've got to explain it to me. Is, is he selling the farm besides selling the development rights? It says that they're looking, looking for a suitable buyer for the farm. Is that not what it says?
V L T has purchased the property and is in the process of identifying a suitable buyer for the farm. An application will be submitted to the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, V H C B, for funds to purchase the development rights on the parcel. So they're looking for somebody to buy the farm, and they're also looking for money to buy the development rights to make sure that it stays undeveloped into the future.
But, but in the meantime, V L T is going to actually be the owner of the property?
V L T has purchased the property.
They go, they own it.
Yes.
All right.
They're looking to sell it, to keep it active as a farm, and purchase the development rights to keep it from becoming developed.
So really, all they're asking for is our, is the, our approval of the development rights, because they've already bought it.
Right. Yeah, they're looking for us to say that this is operating as a farm that will not be developed in perpetuity is consistent with our town plan.
I think it is.
Yeah.
It is, yeah, in fact, I can...
And that's, anybody who buys it must keep it as a farm.
Forever.
And then they, if they're going to sell, they sell it back to the land trust, right?
Let me read to you what...
I thought this way worked.
What Chris Williams wrote.
Isn't Paulie Meadows one of those too?
Yes, it is, yes.
Chris Williams, in supporting it, pointed out that the town, the town plan endorses just such a land conservation in Chapter 6, land use, where under policies and recommendation it states, "Transferable development rights and tools such as acquisition of development rights by the Vermont Land Trust should be utilized to the greatest extent possible to preserve contiguous open space."
Right, right. That's what it is, yeah. Absolutely.
So I move that we send a letter of support to Vermont Land Trust indicating that purchase of the Bochane?
Bochane.
Bochane property is consistent with our town plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is approved 4-0-0. Thank you.
Are there any Bochesnes around?
Bochane.
Bochesnes around.
I can never pronounce that either.
Yeah. I, I don't think I'm the first one to say Buchesny. Somebody, I heard that from somebody.
Oh, yeah. No, but I mean, I just...
It's probably my New Jersey.
That's probably it.
That is his name, the guy that owns it.
I know, but aren't there any still around?
Oh, I don't know. His brother was killed in an airplane.
All right, we're up to the Town Administrator's Report.
I have very little to say. I have contacted the members of the Planning Board and the D R B today who are up for reappointment. I've only received one of the mandatory letters that the policy requires, so I just asked that they would send a brief email that they're interested in being reappointed to the terms, because, you know, all the people who were appointed in the last few months, you're only appointed to the end of the original term, and all of them have to be reappointed. I'm sure they're all interested, or they wouldn't have taken it for four months, so I think it just got by them. So I reminded them all today to please send it in so we'd have it. Only Jay Palmer sent one in so far. And I think we covered everything else I want to talk about in the other parts of the meeting, so, I mean, we don't have anything else to say.
Any other business? Review of action items. I don't remember promising I would do anything.
No, you and I are just going to finish tweaking the budget and getting that to everybody by the weekend, and the meeting next Monday.
Our action items from last time said that we would establish a time and place for the Economic Development Committee meeting, which we...
Coal Hall, Coal Hall at 7 o'clock.
We said we would finalize the budget ballot and warning, which we almost did, and we will really, really finish it on Monday.
We mean it this time.
We mean it. And David is working on the overtime policy relative to the overtime discussion we had last time.
Yeah, I think that's in everybody's drop box, too.
Right.
I wasn't sure if we would get to it tonight, so...
Was that a draft that you were ready for?
That was, that was the one that, I think, covered everything we talked about at the last meeting.
Okay.
So we can bring that up at the next meeting.
Okay.
I had accidentally left it off the agenda, actually, but I don't want to bring it up unless it's on the agenda.
Yeah, not Monday's meeting, but the next...
Not Monday's, the next regular meeting. Unless there's any real, you know, feedback on it, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Then, if there's nothing else, without objection, we stand adjourned.
So, oh.